The wonder you didn't make it to the thing last night.
And then I knew I could not close the machine well because the girl.
We're not on the top.
He had not fallen out with the part he wasn't put on the law.
We were, we're not. So you never complained in the of the schools that get compared with.
That again, so, yeah. Right.
Yeah, okay. You ready?
My friend, how you doing? John Cook.
Good evening, everyone. This is the, welcome to the regular meeting of the Homedale Township Zoning Board of Adjustment, tonight being Wednesday, November 3rd. Jerry, want to call the order?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-10, I hereby announce that adequate notice of this meeting was provided in a notice dated January 6th, 2021, and amended August 13th, 2021, and was sent to the Asbury Park Press, the Two River Times, and posted on the bulletin board of Town Hall, filed in the clerk's office, and posted on the township's website.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Abern?
Here.
Mr. Blumenthal?
Here.
Mr. Buckelino?
Here.
Ms. Campus?
Here.
Mr. Hearn?
Here.
Mr. Ophanatopoulos?
Here.
Mr. Pesci?
Here.
Ms. Klor?
Here.
And Mr. Latif?
Please rise for a pledge of allegiance and then stay standing for a moment of silence to honor the police, military, first responders who've been wounded or killed in action.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item we have this evening is item number one, is a public hearing. Jerry?
13 Fox Hunt Road, Dennis and Gillian Strong, Lot 49.01, Lot 13, in the R40A zone. Applicant seeks setback variance relief for a proposed pool 68 feet from Galloping Hill Road, where 100 feet is required by ordinance.
This is a public hearing on this application. We'll start with the applicant presenting their, and there will be at some point, a little later, an opportunity for it's public to ask questions about the testimony and offer any comments.
The S. Will of the notice is in order.
Okay.
You want to just introduce myself?
Yes, please do.
So my name is Dennis Strong. I live at 13 Fox Hunt Road. I've been a resident of Homedale for almost six years now. We've been at this residence for coming up on two years. We moved from the other side of Homedale where we had a pool a number of years ago, and we decided to move into the country wood section. We love the neighborhood that we're in, and upon moving in, we've looked into the opportunity to put a pool in our backyard, and we understand that because we're on two streets, there's a setback from both streets of 100 feet. And when we looked at where 100 feet would be for the pool from Galloping Hill, it would actually put it right behind our driveway, which would give us a little bit of lack of privacy. You know, if little kids who are playing in the backyard and jumping in and out of the pool, and we would just like to try and keep it centrally located behind the house instead of kind of sticking out in our driveway.
So I just wanted to, a second. Are you the only witness tonight?
I'm the only witness tonight.
You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
That's really the length of it. You know, I've spent a lot of time working with Loretta trying to get things squared away, all our paperwork in order. We've submitted everything, you know, around the fence, the pool itself, the retaining walls, and have provided all of that paperwork ahead of time. And that's really the only relief we're looking for is to just move it from 100 feet to 68 feet.
Okay, I mean, this is not an unusual situation. We've seen before, and any property which is a corner invariably runs into issues like this. I know our engineer has looked at it. Bob, do you have any comments on?
Let's swear our professionals in for the evening. You both sort of tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
For the record, both Bob McKean and Mr. Moore.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions. I'd like the applicant to give some testimony on the type of fence and the gate he proposes around the pool or around the property. Also some testimony on landscaping. There really wasn't any landscaping on the plan, so if he could just give a little testimony about how, if he intends to provide any landscaping and how he intends on restoring the property once the pool is in. And some testimony on the pool equipment, how the backwash water is going to be handled. And that's basically it. The plans that were provided were very easy to review. But if we could get just a little bit more testimony on the items I just mentioned, for the record, I think the board should hear that.
Yep, happy to share that. We've worked with a company by the name of Carl's Fencing. They've been doing work here in Homedale in the past, so they're very familiar with the rules and the variance and the zoning law. And we're going to be doing a black aluminum fence along the front or the street-facing parts of the property, anything that's going to be publicly seen. Across the back of the property, which right now is just a lot of bushes and stuff, we're going to do black chain link. It's just more cost efficient and nobody really sees it. It's hidden in the trees and hidden in the bushes, so there's not really a whole lot to do there. We've had them come out and look at the property, and it's all on the survey there. Regarding the landscaping, currently in the area where the pool is proposed, the only thing that would be removed is one tree. It's a rather large tree, but it's one tree. The rest of the landscaping of our property is really quite colorful and beautiful, so we're trying to avoid having to remove any of that. It's kind of interesting because the flowers come out with different colors at different times of the year, so it's a really nice benefit to have, being that we moved in in December. We didn't know about that until we actually got into the springtime and got to see it. So we're really trying to avoid changing anything that's there. We do plan to plant more along the lines of where there's a retaining wall. We do want to add some greenery to that. We don't want to be looking at stone structures, you know, so we'd really like it to look a little bit more homey and country-like than looking at a stone wall. And the backwash, the pool equipment is called out on the survey. It's off to the side of the house, not the side, but the back and the side of the house, and the backwash would go right into that area and would drain away.
What does that mean, in a pit?
No, it's not in a pit. It would just drain into the yard. We have a rather large yard.
Is that okay, Bob? You normally have some sort of a pit or something.
Yeah, but like Mr. Strong just testified to, there's a lot of property here on his, that he has, and backwash today is probably cleaner than it was, you know.
Saltwater, I would imagine.
Yeah, so it won't be adversely affecting the property owners, his adjacent property owners. He's on the corner, and if he puts it to the side, I mean, I don't see a problem with it.
So it's to the street side or the other side?
I have thought about it. I haven't really planned exactly where it would go because it's a soft hose. You can kind of put it in a lot of different places.
I'm just, only from my own personal experience, I'm concerned where water goes when they come and clean it or pump it out or whatever the reason, and it doesn't flow to your neighbor's property and put swabs on it.
Right.
It wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't go anywhere near there. It wouldn't go anywhere near a neighbor's property.
Which side is it going to go on?
It's on the, where the equipment is, is towards the Galloping Hill side of the house.
So there's nobody there, so if it goes that way, it's okay.
It's going to either go into, further down the front of my yard, to the side of my yard, or towards the street.
That's fine.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you, you had a letter from the Home Association about the easement on the north side of the property?
We did.
Is that easement, in fact, in use at all?
So it's hard to tell exactly where the easement is. My neighbor has a fence that runs along that easement. I can't tell if it's in the easement or if it's along the easement. But as far as is the easement in use, it's not really used for anything. It's just all greenery there. There's nothing there.
Because I think the original intent was potentially for a network of equestrian trails or something like that, but you're saying it's not being used at all?
No, it's not.
So it's open? Because I just drove fast on Fox Hunt and it looked like it was totally overgrown. You couldn't even get through it.
No, I don't think you could.
So you're put, what you're doing is the fence is along your property line and hence in the middle of that easement?
Mm-hmm.
And you have permission from the Home Association?
We do, yes.
Mr. Chairman, just.
Go ahead, Bob.
If Mr. Strong could just give the board a little testimony on the proposed six-foot waterfall that he has on his plan?
I actually am thinking of getting rid of it, to be honest with you. It was just something that the pool company had included in the plans as an option to us, so we decided to leave it in there as a kind of ornamental feature, a nice feature. But I'm not 100% sure we're going to move forward with it. That might just end up being removed completely. But we did think it was better to include it in the plans and have it be an option for us.
And all other aspects of the plan that was provided, the grading and the like, are all acceptable to me, is from an engineering standpoint. I mean, what he would have to do would, you know, provide the details. I'd like to see, and maybe the construction office would like to see, the details, the manufacturer's literature on the filter system, and if he does go ahead with the waterfall, the waterfall equipment, and things of that nature. But other than that.
Would it be appropriate after completion to have a survey showing what the actual?
An Asb- yes.
An Asbill?
Right.
For the record?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it gunite?
No, no, it's going to be.
The liner?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Isn't that now our requirement? Didn't we get that changed, that anything, all the tools have Asbill?
It hasn't been, I don't think it's been codified. And it's been, it's a condition, it hasn't been codified under the township ordinances yet. But every time that we have a pool, based on past experience.
Okay, it's not a big deal.
Right, we just request an Asbill to make sure that where he built it or where we agreed it.
Why, he just adds another sentence in the special conditions. Right, but I also need to know if this board follows Bob's recommendation for a condition for the details. Do you, what, just if you can specify which?
It's in my letter.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Just to comply with the details in your letter?
Correct.
That's the question. Just to know that I love you. Why are the, we don't normally have engineering on a simple pool backyard variance. Is there a reason why we did it?
No, we've been doing that for a while now.
We have?
Yes, because there was one time that a resident put a pool in, and then when they went to get, you know, the approval, we found that the pool was not built where.
No, not the survey. The Asbill, 100%, I've had a lot of personal experiences. I'm asking why we're having engineering, an engineering review for this?
Oh, because, well, drainage.
Because we don't, we normally in the past, on a simple pool, we don't normally have an engineering review.
No, not.
Not even on the topography.
Right, and, right.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I've done, I've done several of them.
I have no issues with you, Bob. It's just that when she was chairman, I was chairman, we never had engineers give reports of the backyard variance.
You know we have no issue with you.
It was, it was a question like, sometimes we would hear about it, and if it was something major, we might say for it, but for the majority of the time, it wasn't.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know what's going on now, we haven't been updated on it. You know why it's happening now or not.
Okay.
Because it's an undue expense for the resident. That's the reason.
I don't have an issue with that.
Okay, do you have any questions about this application?
No, I think that Bob's letter covered it. You know, we, the only thing I would just ask the applicant to put very great testimony on the record about whether we perceive that this variance request will have any impacts on the search surrounding neighbors.
No, I don't believe it'll have any impact. You've got this Galloping Hill to the one side, which currently is all trees and bushes on my property, and it's all bushes across the back of the property and all bushes on the Fox Hunt side of the property. So it's really just a very quiet, secluded backyard.
So yes, I have a question. How high is this outside fence that you're throwing here into the?
The fence will comply with the township. I know the chain link is four feet high, and I believe the aluminum is five feet high.
That is sufficient for the privacy level?
Mm-hmm.
Do any of the board members have any other questions about this application?
Oh, Bob?
Yeah, let's get to that, the board first. Okay, there are none, and we'll open the floor for, do any members of the public have any questions about this application? Does anyone here have any comments about this application? Let the records reflect, there, no one raised their hand, so we have no public comments.
Want to make a motion?
A second. What was the motion?
I'm making a motion that we approve the variance application with the comments from Mr. Bucko.
My second.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Ms. Abern?
Yes.
Mr. Buckelino?
Yes.
Ms. Campus?
Yes.
Mr. Hearn?
Yes.
Mr. Pesci?
Yes.
Mr. Ophanatopoulos?
Yes.
And Mr. Blumenthal?
Yes.
Good luck.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Moving on to item two, continued public hearing.
470 Red Hill Road, dementia center. Preliminary slash final site plan number 2026, Lot 49.02, Lots 40, 40Q, and 41 in the R40B zone. Applicant seeks a use variance to create an assisted living residence, which will be a facility for those suffering from dementia for 105 residents. The facility will consist of a state-of-the-art residential memory support program that will have a variety of innovative programs and a building design concepts, including an assessment program, educational services, and extensive, extensive community outreach and support.
So this is a continued public hearing on this application. We've had a couple of hearings before, and there's been a variety of testimony given, and we will continue now. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, my name is Sandy Brown. I represent the applicant in this matter. This is the third hearing that we've had before you, and thank you for having us back again. Good evening, members of the public. So I would perceive that this evening will be concentrating on engineering. We've had a lot of testimony on non-engineering for good reasons, I would suggest. I would like to suggest we should concentrate on engineering in relationship to the tentative date that has been set up for the site inspection for the Saturday. At the October 20th of the meeting, there was a discussion about making amendments dealing with EMT and fire access. Evening, Mr. Bucko. Bucko was kind enough the next day to send a memo, which was from the board, for us to review and to follow up on. And I'm happy to say that we are here to address that directly. And I have to my left here our main project engineer, Hal Simoff has been involved since day one, and it will start and probably end with his testimony tonight. So without further ado, unless you want to hear more background, I'll have him sworn in, and we can get right to it.
Fine, I think that's appropriate. But, I mean, the key, I think, from what you just said, is to make sure we cover tonight everything that we might need prior to a site visit potentially this Saturday, and let's see how far we get, and then we can discuss all of that. And then, so continued testimony on other topics such as operations, which we didn't finish quite, but that will continue another evening.
Yes, that would be my understanding, and that's fine.
And just to put it also on the record, and we'll say it again, we are considering having a site visit. Site visits are a formal meeting of the board, but they are not a part of the hearing. So there is no testimony taken at that. It's simply for board members and the public to visit and see the site. Any comments have to be brought back and made as a part of the record at the next hearing. And we'll talk more about that, and we'll certainly remind everyone exactly what the rules are if and when we do the site visit. So, go ahead.
You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Can you just spell your name for the record, please?
Hal, that's my first name. My surname is Simoff, S-I-M-O-F-F. My address is 2 Shun Pike Road, Madison, New Jersey.
All right, I'll have a seat. And as I've done in the past, I've been somewhat informal with my witnesses, if that's okay. We'll call him Hal. We're about the same age, so I think that would be appropriate. So Hal, if you will, you're familiar with testifying before boards, is that fair to say?
Yes.
So as you usually do when you introduce yourself, would you let the board and therefore the public know your educational background, how it led to your PE license, and how you came here today?
Yes, I'm a graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technologies, bachelor's in civil engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer, a licensed professional planner. I'm a fellow with the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and I've been qualified before boards from Kate Lake County up to Bergen County in a number of years. I hate to say how many.
How many?
Thirty.
Very good.
And I've been qualified as a professional engineer in multiple locations.
And are you familiar with Homedale Township?
Yes.
Have you been involved in any projects before in Homedale Township?
Not that I can recall.
Have you, do you have familiarity with the project or the site requests?
Of course, yes. I've been working on this for about two years.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would offer Mr. Simoff as not only a licensed New Jersey PE, but also an engineer who specializes also in traffic engineering.
Any of the board members have any questions about Hal's credentials? Or we accept your credentials as a professional engineer?
Thank you.
Thank you. So to give a very quick summary of where we think you'd like to proceed today, we'll start right from the get-go. We won't have typical testimony from a PE as he starts, because you've already heard a lot about where it is through the video on September 22nd, the testimony by our chief project architect. You remember the PowerPoint presentation that really focused in on where this is, I would suggest, if you want to get into that as Hal starts talking. We're more than happy to do that. But again, I think the real focus is, let's get right down to the immediate site plan, access for EMT, and also fire. So let's give the benefit of the board of background, which led to today's presentation, and let's start with your interaction with the fire officials, EMT, your regional plan, up to Mr. Bucko's email memo of October 21st.
Yes, well, before we finalize the site plan, we met with, by Zoom, with the fire marshal, and I was given the fire template for the fire truck that they planned to use, and we came up with a plan, and that was the basis for the original submission. It seems that some people were left out of the loop, and we now have a proposal based on comments from Bob Bucko and from the fire chief for a revised layout that we plan, that I'd like to present tonight. The reality of it is that this revised layout requires some changes to the drainage and the drain and the bases. So until I get some feedback on this new layout, I'd like to pass on the layout of the bases.
All right, with that in mind, if you would put on the board this exhibit that you're going to describe, and this will be a new exhibit. For the record, I would suggest that the original filing of the site plan is a public record already, unless you feel we should mark that especially. I'm just going to have marked at this time the new plan. It's a suggested plan, it's going to be up to your option. So with that in mind, Loretta, I have a new exhibit, and I think we're. Oh, yeah, you have that already, yes. Okay, and it looks like this. All right, good, great, thank you. We also have copies of.
You know, I think you make your own judgment.
It's up there, so that's good.
Clear?
Yeah. Yep. So if you could pass that around.
I can see. One of the 11 by 7.
Yes.
You want a little better?
Yes.
I'll take the one you marked.
Okay. Yeah. Suddenly, I don't...
I'll let you mark that.
How many you got?
Okay, we got them here.
There you go.
Yeah, this one's a little...
This is way better. Okay. Thank you for that comment.
And I've mounted on the board. Just handed out.
So, Mr. Chairman, unless you want this marked separately, what Loretta has marked now? We're good, A7. Okay, very good, thank you. Go ahead. For the record, we're showing A7 on the video screen also. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, just before we start, I received this this afternoon, so I really haven't had a chance to do a real engineering review on it, so it's just going to be for discussion purposes?
Yes, and that is the purpose.
That's fine.
And he'll explain to you how this has culminated in what you see today. We've been working on this ever since Mr. Bucko's. But, you know, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mr. Bucko.
Bob.
Oh, fine, thank you, Bob. So, let me ask Hal, you received Bob Bucko's email the day after the last hearing, right?
Correct.
And there were certain requests or request mandates, whatever they were, listed on what the board expected in terms of compliance, is that fair to say?
Yes.
And do you have that there in front of you?
Yes.
And I don't know if we need to have that marked, I know it was sent out by Mr. Bucko. Just for the record, what's the date of the... Okay, it's dated October 21, 2021. The same. A list of items.
It was Thursday morning at 8:14.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Bucko, for, I was very impressed, and it got out the next morning. But unless... That was on auto. Particular members of the board want the details of that, or if you want to have it marked, I'll just ask you, have you reviewed all these items with United Methodist Communities to claim?
Yes.
And is the applicant owner able and willing to satisfy all the provisions set forth in that document?
Yes.
And are you here today to graphically point out the items that can be reflected in this suggested plan?
Yes.
Okay, and actually, compliance with all those items, you know, can't necessarily be put on the graph, but to get it for the record, we're happy to comply with that. Work with Mr. Bucko and any remaining details. So with that in mind, Hal, would you now go into details of what we did to abide by the provisions or suggestions?
I'd like, if I may, just interject a couple of questions, more operational questions, but they get to my mind the background to what's here. This is a proposed dementia center?
Yes.
For seniors?
Yes.
And as a consequence, although we certainly hope we don't have fires happening here all the time, but still, one wants the complex to be safe and for fire people when needed to be able to access it. Far more likely with 100 seniors, it's much more likely that there will be medical incidences requiring ambulances and the light to come visit. What is the length of the typical person's stay at a place like this?
That is a...
One year or 10 years?
Well, just for introduction, because I like introducing Cindy Jakes, testified here on October 20th. As you noted before, operations would be discussed at the next meeting.
Right.
Cindy has anticipated that very question, and one's related. If you want to hear it now, I can have her come up.
Just a brief thing, you know...
All right, why don't we have...
I'm trying to just put... To what extent are these issues important? How frequent is something like this going to happen that we have to worry about it?
Counsel, for the record, Cindy Jakes was sworn in last time, and if she's still under oath, of course, unless you want to have her re sworn. Yep, we're good. All right, we called you Cindy last time.
Right.
We've known each other a long time, and I thought you might be called again, but we will have you come back again. Did you hear Mr. Blumenthal's question?
Yes.
And can you please try to answer that to the best of your ability?
Right. So I would estimate the average length of stay is about two years, 18 months to two years, before a person moves on or expires. In terms of emergency response, most of the ambulance responses are planned. They're usually for, after observation of an issue with someone, we schedule an ambulance to come and transport to a physician or to a facility or whatever's needed. As far as 911 calls, very infrequent.
And just for background, to refresh everybody's collective recollection, last time you testified about the fact that United Methodist Communities has other, they're called comprehensive CCRCs and related facilities, correct?
Right.
And each of those have wards of dementia?
Memory support residences.
Yes, and so there's a history?
Right.
Of experience with dementia patients over approximately how much time?
Well, our MSRs have been in existence for many years, and I recently asked our directors this very question. We have about 90 residents now, excuse me. Their response was that the frequency of a 911 call was very infrequent, and that, as I said, most of them are scheduled because of an issue after an observation of a resident who has maybe fallen in.
For a schedule thing, that probably means you use a different service than a local emergency service.
Correct. Right, an ambulance contract.
That's based on 90, 80 residents?
Right.
Not 90 facilities?
No, no, 90 residents...
Which is smaller than this proposed.
A little bit, yes.
And what's the age, smaller by 15? What do you think the age group of these residents would be?
I mean, it's 85 and up generally. Average age is late 80s.
So you're saying the frequency of a 911 call may be once a month, once a week?
Well, 911 is called, you know, we have nurses on staff that will attend to people who are sick. There are triage and interventions that we can do before a 911 call. So it's usually something that's bleeding or breathing problems that are causing a 911 call.
What about cardiac?
Well, yes, of course.
So if your staff... What would you do if you have a CPR in progress? What would you do with that patient? Did you call 911 for that patient?
Yes.
So even though you have nurses on staff, you're still going to call 911?
Right, but those incidences do not happen frequently.
Okay.
You know?
I'm asking because I am a member of the Homedale State Squad, and I speak from personal experience. I don't represent the squad in my statements that I make. I represent myself and what I've experienced. And we have a number of nursing homes in the town, and we're there on a regular basis.
Right. So this is not a nursing home, that's the other thing.
Well, that's why I asked you what your age group is. So the age group is up there where issues, health issues occur, various health issues of all different sorts, self-inflicted or accidental falls or whatever they may be. So all my comments that I'll make during this hearing will be based on my experience and what I see, because whatever we approve tonight, or if we do approve this, is going to be lived in this town forever. So I don't want to have a place that we can't safely go and help patients and get them out of there when we have to get there and access them. All my comments I've made up to now have to do with that.
Right.
So I'm not, I don't want to debate with you whether you might have one call a week or one a month or one a year, but I want to be prepared for the most amount of calls and how we can handle it. Because if we build it thinking there's only going to be two, three a year, what happens if it goes the other way? And, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you very much for that question, and I'll ask Cindy directly. Has the management team for United Methodist Communities discussed this very concept since before the application was filed, and especially since we've heard comments starting at the hearing on September 22nd?
Yes, absolutely.
Has the management team discussed in particular the comments by our vice chair, and especially in relationship to Mr. Bucko's memo the day after the last hearing?
Yes.
Has the management team complied, in your understanding, completely with all the comments raised in that memo in order to maximize the access for EMTs? And that's what Mr., that's what Hal's going to talk about tonight, right?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yep.
And in fact, we understand that there's a site visit, we understand the sensitivities, we understand that there is a balance between ultimate safety of a village versus making sure that anytime EMTs have to come fire, that there's full protection and access. And I'm sure if we haven't complied 100%, then we'll hear and we will respond. So we are here to satisfy the board. Right, when you say EMTs, there also could be paramedics that respond.
Sure.
So it could be two rigs coming, one is paramedic, based out of Meridian Hospitals, and another one would be EMS, Homedale volunteers. That has been contemplated, Hal, we'll explain that. Okay. I'll wait to hear your presentation before I ask.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions of our VP, who is in charge of dementia patients?
Thank you.
Should be here.
Provide a context to what we're talking about.
Yes, yes, exactly. So, thank you.
I have a question about, when you said most of them stay for two years and then they move on, so are they, do they move on because they could become too ill or expire, you said? So are they, are these relatively healthy people or unhealthy? I mean, I'm wondering.
Well, I mean, generally, I meant that they expire.
Because then, his comments about if they're 85 and they're at a stage where in a couple of years they might expire, then I would think the EMT calls would be more frequent, you know, some say, once, that's what, it would seem like once, one call every few months seems a little less frequent in that age group.
Well, these are not people who are at end of life, and in long-term care, that's more the case.
Yeah, just to get back, right, so United Methodist Homes has nine facilities. Does the United Methodist Homes have in its comprehensive care facilities a whole spectrum of types of residents, including skilled nursing and assisted living?
Yes.
Are they, are skilled nursing and assisted living generally more frail and in need of more assistance?
The skilled nursing is generally more frail and in need of more assistance.
And so, and approximately how long has the Methodist Communities had experience with skilled nursing?
Well, over 100 years.
So was there a sensitivity involved in thinking about the experience of the Methodist Communities over time in dealing with visits by ambulances, by EMTs, by hospital squads?
Sure, absolutely. We have it down pat.
Any other questions at this time?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so Cindy, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Hal, so you've heard the inquiries, and let's get right to responses.
I have two, I've received two memos or two requests, one from the one that we spoke about from Bob Bucko, and the other was from David Olson, who sent us some comments from Detective Eric Ramanda.
All right, just for the record, David Olson is the fire marshal?
David Olson is the fire marshal. He is the person that I had been dealing with, and he was the point person to coordinate the comments.
Okay.
So basically, the previous, the previous plan had the ending of the loop, I'll call it the loop road, out here where this black dot is, where the fire hydrant, there were originally three fire hydrants.
Can you speak in a microphone? It's really hard to hear.
I don't understand.
Oh, I'll take...
I'm taking this one.
Oh, okay, yeah, thanks.
I might have to turn it off.
Okay.
Turn the switch on.
Oh, you're very good.
Okay.
Good?
Thank you.
All right, good, okay.
So originally, the loops stopped approximately between House 4 and 5, the previous plan. There were three fire hydrants, there was one at the end, approximate at the end of the parking lot by the parkway, there was a third, a second one, as I said, at the end of the loop, then there was, I'm sorry, a second one, then a third one over on the east side of the property, approximately at House number 8. And that's where the loop stopped. So let me just first go to the ones from Bob Bucko. There's, there are three comments that don't apply to site plan, but we will conform to them. An elevator wide enough to fit a stretcher, that's been, entrances and, all entrances, exterior and interior shall be 36 inches wide, that's a standard that we'll provide, you know, we'll put into the plan, I spoke to the architect. All entrances into the houses should not have depths, steps, excuse me, that's agreed. The next one, ambulance should be able to back up to the following. Now, to the gates, we show, we show one, two, three additional ambulance access, and they're in, they're located in the connector roads between the houses. There's, there are connector walkways, will have doors on the outside that'll meet standards, that'll, and, so what would happen is, the ambulance would pull forward and back into this area here.
All right, Hal, if I could stop you there, of course, what you have in front of the board, and for the record, in screen, which we've provided to especially the public, but also the members of the board, this was prepared in conjunction with a three-slide visual, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, I don't know how to put them up side by side, but Hal is now focusing in on some of the very precise details, and we can go back and forth, but I would suggest now would be an opportune time to have this document marked, and I would ask Travis, our tech leader, to now switch over, and again, if anybody wants to go back and forth, fine, but now you'll see the very details. Which one? A7? All right, that's fine. All right, now... Just, what are we going to call, A7? Would you describe this one, and it's three slides?
Basically, these are what we started with from the architect.
And let's quickly go through the next two, and then we'll delve into the final work product. And the next slide, this is a previously discussed plan, not today, is that correct?
Yeah, we had a Zoom meeting with the EMT people, and this is what they asked for originally.
Now let's go right to the final plan, let's concentrate on this so that the board and the public can more precisely see exactly what we're talking about in terms of access.
This coincides with the submission of my site plan. So basically, what the architect did was give me the locations where the ambulance and the fire can enter the facility, and then I plotted them on the site plan.
And is your understanding that the architect looked at the, I'll call it the Bob Bucko memo, and attempted to comply with the requests?
As well as the fire chief's memo.
Yes, okay.
So basically, there are, there are, as I said, there's an ambulance gate in between these, between Houses 4 and 5, there's an ambulance gate between 7 and 8, an ambulance gate between 11 and 12, and then there's the original ambulance location off the parking lot that was talked about originally.
All right, let's focus right in on the ambulance gates, which are in purple, is that correct?
Yes.
So was there a consideration of balance of security versus full access that would be needed or requested by the EMT folks?
Yes, well, there are connector corridors or pathways between the houses, and the architect has planned to put doors on the outside, so...
So how is it that the EMT ambulance squads would have free access, and at the same time, security from an interior point of view with the residents would be maintained?
Well, there would be, it's a detail that has to be worked out, but there would be Knox boxes or some sort of way for the EMT people to get into the, into these breezeways.
And if Mr. Bucko or folks, more expertise in ambulance access, a lot more expertise than me, would want, you know, more particularity in terms of making sure that that corridor would be constructed so that there would be no infringement and bringing in a gurney, would that be modified accordingly?
Yes, the architecturals will obviously be able to plot access for a gurney.
Okay, and so if you could go back to Mr. Bucko's memo?
So basically, so we show those locations... So basically, so we show those locations and we show the, I plotted these access points using a 30-foot-long vehicle, which I assume, I have to, if I get the specifics on your ambulance, I can modify this or adapt it to this turning template. But it would just affect the radiuses on, so that the ambulance would pull forward and then back into the, it's my understanding that's the way you want it.
That's perfect.
So you pull forward and then work out these radii on either side to accommodate the vehicle that you have.
Now, let's talk about, I'm not getting too far ahead. Let's talk about the comments at the October 20th meeting about making sure that our EMT helpers can get the gurney out. It's a hard surface and there shouldn't be any problem. Because as we discussed before, it was originally planned, for various reasons, to be grasscrete. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
And now, this proposal has that entire fire road as, as what?
Well, the fire, or the circular road that goes all the way around, I'm open to suggestions as to what the board is comfortable with. If it has to be paved, if it's desired to be paved, it obviously increases the.
Impervious coverage.
Coverage.
So that's the balance. If it's going to be a grasscrete type of material, I'm, if the board gives me some feedback as to what kind of material they would like to see this, this accessway provided, I'll put it on the plan.
And also, the United Methodist Communities would offer, if the board is inclined to, also consider what is generically called pervious pavement, is that correct?
Pervious.
Yes.
Concrete.
Pervious concrete, pervious bytum, and also gravel-based plastic, we call it these days. Is that fair to say?
Yes. I mean, obviously, we hope that these are not going to be like a roadway usage, so, so that.
I mean, I very much support your, what you're suggesting, that this is not a four-lane highway and shouldn't be used as such. And in fact, at the entrance to it, I think it should be screened off to indicate that it's not for public access. It's for emergency use only. And that it would, we'll get to talking about stormwater and all of that another time, but generally speaking, you're already seeking a coverage variance. So anything you can do by making use of pervious materials where it will be functional, I would be in favor of.
I appreciate that, and.
I'm going to interrupt. So as far as first aid squad, and I'll speak only behalf of them, not Fire Department, they should speak on their behalf. We prefer to have a solid surface where the stretcher rolls on. We don't want to be bumping up and down and giving somebody a bumpy ride getting into the ambulance. So wherever the ambulance accesses needs to be asphalt, concrete, some sort of solid surface that we can roll on. Okay? And then just to jump in, as far as access to doors, in the comments, we talked about combination locks of some sort. keypad, which we can discuss, I'm not going to mention a number on the public portion, but we could pick a number and have all the gates the same. So this way, we're not waiting for attendants to come and open doors while we need to go to an emergency and there's no way for us to access. We should be able to get in there quickly. As far as lock boxes with keys, I think that's something else that can get lost, and I don't recommend that.
I'm not an expert on the, on the mechanical equipment, so.
Okay, well, I'm just commenting on your comment. Now, as far as the Fire Department, they may have different needs if they want to bring their aerial truck and they need to set up a ladder, and maybe Mr. Bucko can speak about that, right?
Well, that's next.
Well, go ahead. The bigger and heavier truck.
Correct. They need difference.
They wanted, they wanted the ability to have a ladder truck come in so they could fight the fire from the top if necessary. That was one of the suggestions and requests by the Fire Department.
I would suggest to make sure that everybody's comfortable in an efficient time manner, that Hal can meet with Bob anytime, anyplace. We've already had these Zoom meetings with the other folks. Whatever is desired collectively, we'll be happy to provide it. Again, there is that balance, which is up to you, impervious versus pervious. We're happy to respond to any desires.
I can certainly understand Dimitri's concerns about wanting a flat, not rigid, I mean, flexible or bumpy surface for a gurney, a stretcher. But even then, so that some of these things, which are little blocks, would have lots of ridges, that may not be appropriate.
Yes, and.
There are pervious concretes and asphalts that would provide a solid surface. What you can do, and they have in the industry and they use it on roadways, is porous pavement, where vehicles drive, but it's porous. But it has the same structural integrity as a regular asphalt. So it would meet his needs and be somewhat pervious. Well, it would be, it would meet Dimitri's concern about a solid roadway surface, but it would also help out with the drainage because it's porous.
Yes.
So, you know. We can meet two needs at once.
Yes.
It's a win-win.
Let me just interrupt you again. As far as the first aid goes, we don't say we need the entire roadway to be this surface, only maybe 10 feet from the doorway, so I back up and it's flat ground, from where the end of the ambulance stops until we roll out and get to the doorway to get into the facility. That area, that's all we really need to be paved.
I appreciate that. Remember that comment last time, that we're offering, offering the flexibility of whatever you desire. I'm glad that we were talking about some of the details. I should mention that we do have another professional engineer working on this project. His name is Bill Fitzgerald. He has 45 years of experience dealing with a lot of issues dealing with site plans. He's been consulting with Hal. He can't be here tonight because he's sick in bed. But I won't burden you with, but I have from him lots of literature. And Bob, you probably know Bill Fitzgerald from working around the county. He, he, if he was here, we'd say he's been the Monmouth University engineer for many decades. He has many facilities, athletic fields, dormitories, all kinds of experience like that with these materials. And he can discuss it with Bob and make sure everybody's comfortable with exactly what you want.
I know the gentleman, so.
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
This is just for my own reference. The initial impervious coverage calculations, the grasscrete is counted as fully pervious in those?
Yes.
Okay, so anything, so anything would be.
Yeah, this, well, originally, one more comment to this. Originally, this was 12 to 14 feet wide, and the Fire Department, Fire Chief asked for it to be 20. So this circular road is 20 feet wide.
It's got to be.
Yeah.
The reason for the 20 feet is because the stabilizers have to come down on the rig. So, and when those stabilizers come down, it's 20 feet. So, you know, we're talking about 20 feet. I'd like to talk to Dave, maybe we make it 21, 22, only because if it's 20 and they're not centered on that roadway, that they'll come down, you know. But that's something that I'd like to discuss and I wanted, you know, Hal to get through his testimony and then we.
You mentioned Dave, but you're also, he mentioned Eric Fernando. He is the chief of the Fire Department. He is a detective, but he is a chief, so he should be included in that.
Well, he was.
Okay.
We have his comments.
Okay.
Originally, the comments were just from Dave Olson.
Yeah.
And then Dave Olson approved the layout. And then Eric didn't approve the layout.
If we get everybody on board to make sure that all possible concerns are addressed and to do it so everybody and everything can be safe and yet keep the coverage down.
That's why, that's why we start with this.
Yes. And I would suggest that the board will be, can be the final determiner of that balance between pervious safety, safety of the residents, safety of those who are fighting fires. I mean, I agree with what you're saying. I understand whatever the Fire Department needs, they are all around that loop. They're all one-story houses, but whatever is determined by the Fire Department to be proper, we will abide by that. We're not second guessing, certainly the Fire Department. And, and so, yes.
Is this road going to be marked for the site visit?
Yes.
It will be, completely marked, right?
I can talk, well, we have that to talk about also tonight. I don't know if you want us to finish this portion of it.
Just take one thing at a time.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Just to fill you in, this road, if it was paved, would add about 4% of the impervious coverage.
And that's 20 feet, not the 22, right?
I calculated it, 20 feet wide, this dimension, this circular layout, and it adds about 4%.
Yeah, that's assuming that it's impervious by two minutes or some solid.
But if we, some solution that addresses the impervious, the critical impervious comments, you know, we can.
Bob, for our purposes, does it still count as impervious surfaces, the way the ordinance is written? Or do we count it as impervious if it is truly impervious?
Well, if it's truly impervious, it's impervious.
Is impervious, okay.
But, you know, again, you can get some benefit out of this porous pavement. But, you know, once Hal goes through the calculations, it may be, it may be minimal, you know, where it doesn't really matter if you use total impervious.
But we wouldn't have to add to the calculation, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, definitely add to the calculation for runoff.
Well, he's, he's asking if it's pervious.
Right, yeah.
If it's pervious.
We have to increase his pervious, even though it's an impervious surface.
Yeah, no, right. No, right now, his calculations were based on pervious.
Right.
All right, so he has to redo those, not only for the, because we extended it from 14 feet to 20 feet.
Right.
So now you got that.
Or 21.
Or maybe, you never know. But, yeah, so it would all come into the calculations of the stormwater management.
But also getting to Mr. Buffalino's point, if in fact, the final decision was to put in what we've called pervious, pervious concrete, pervious plastic, pervious, would that be counted as pervious rather than impervious under the ordinance?
Under the ordinance, which we've seen before, right, in the backyard.
No, it would be impervious.
It would be impervious. All right, that's good.
Okay. My question is, we're finding out about what kind of services needed for the ambulance. Has that question specifically been asked of the Fire Department? Because I don't want to see it, well, gee, we never thought of that.
I have Hal address that.
What kind of service they need, let's say for the stabilizers, because when there's a fire, they're not, they may not know when they need to put those, where those fire trucks are going to land and put it down. So I'm just saying to, let's get the question to the Fire Department so later on, we're not finding out, oh, they needed that kind of service.
I'll let Hal give more details, but the answer is that it was approved by the Fire Marshal before we came before you.
He's the Fire Chief?
No, the Fire Marshal.
The Fire Marshal.
And then the Fire, Fire Chief was the one who, who indicated no.
Pointed out the other concerns.
That's Eric, right? So, and in fact, well, give more details about how much in.
There are sprinklers in this facility by code, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a one-story, these are, all these are one stories, except for these three buildings.
Except for the main building.
The main building and the two buildings and the two houses on either side.
We just wanted to.
They're, these are two-story.
We thought they had sprinklers by code. I would think it's kind of a story.
No, they do have sprinklers.
And that's why the Fire Department wanted the ability to bring the ladder truck in? So if that, those buildings ever did catch and they were on the second story, they could fight, fight the fire, come down.
Well, just to be clear, there are no second-story buildings anyplace except, to show where the second-story buildings are.
These three buildings, these three buildings along the parking lot.
Right.
Are the three that are.
Not on the northern tiers, not on anywhere where this.
All the, all the buildings on the Loop Road are, are one-story.
Modern fire prevention, fire suppression.
It's my understanding that it's a higher level of fire safety by code.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to be clear, as part of this lengthy process to get all approvals, not only did you hear about getting, us getting in May 2021, the NJDOH CON approval, but this also goes through the gauntlet of DCA and, and also another round of DOH approvals, which keys in on matters like this. We can provide all the detail you want. Mr. Fitzgerald, for example, is a true expert in that field. But yes, it's looked at very carefully.
I have some questions on, I know you want to keep going, but before you go too further. So you made these ambulance access points, and we're going into a breezeway? Is that what you would call that, between the buildings?
But they are enclosed.
So it's a breezeway, a hallway of some sort?
It's a hallway.
How, how, I know you're not the architect, but do you have any idea how wide those are?
Well, let me attempt to measure it.
Oh, okay, that's okay. You don't have to scale it then. So the reason I'm asking for that is if we get in there with a stretcher, is from what I'm understanding, is that from that point, I would access all four buildings from coming into that point. Is that the purpose of doing that?
Yes.
Each entrance goes into the breezeway, and from the breezeway, I can, I would go through the buildings to go to the other building. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
In terms of the details of your good question, we can provide you, the members of the board, Bob Bucko, with all those details of the corridor to make absolutely sure that there's no concern about what I believe you're talking about, which is full access, full access without any constraints at all. And we will make the adjustments to make sure that, that our EMT folks are, are taken care of and therefore our residents will be taken care of in the most efficient way.
Okay, and then there's some pathways that say, emergency department, Fire Department emergency gate. Is, are those pathways going to be the same solid material, or that's up for decision on what you're going to make the pathways out?
Well, that's some sort of fencing.
No. There's a path. Yeah, if you, if you go off what we've been calling the fire road, you go to a gate at these different locations. Isn't that correct, Hal?
Yeah, it's a gate with, in between the buildings are fencing.
Three gates, I see, in three spots.
Yeah, but there's also a perpendicular roadway from the edge of the fire road to the gate into the complex, right? And so the question is, is that also proposed to be solid? The answer is yes. Whether or not it's pervious or impervious, it is definitely not supposed to be anything other than something solid so that the fire folks will have the access.
So that's just a walk gate to get through there? It's not a drive gate?
That's the, that's the intention.
To be a walk gate.
Because, but if they want to, if they want to drive, we can make it a little bit wider.
Okay, that's Fire Department comment. The, the one between Buildings Three and One and Two, it seems like the walkway goes there and stops, and then it doesn't connect to anywhere else on the other side. Is there supposed to be a sidewalk or something that it connects to?
We'll have to add the sidewalk.
Okay.
Okay, another question.
We're kind of working on this as we go.
Okay, that's no problem. That's why I brought it up.
Tell me you'll do that.
If we're, if we have to get to a patient in building in House 14 and 15, or House One and Two, are we going from how are we getting in there and how are we getting up to the second floor? You said there were two-story buildings.
Well, there, my understanding, there's a connector on the second floor between the town center and the other two houses.
So if someone goes in the first floor, how do they get to the second floor?
Elevator.
And that's where, in the town center?
Yeah, I believe so.
So the breezeway is two levels, a first-floor breezeway and a second-floor breezeway. So you're saying we would.
I know there's a, I'm sorry for interrupting. I know there's a second-floor breezeway connector. I'm not sure about what's on the first floor, but.
We can have that.
We can have that clarified.
But there is an elevator. The, one of the points is to make sure that the elevator, which was mentioned in the Bucko memo, was wide enough for a gurney. And it will satisfy state standards. We can give you all the details you want to make sure.
Yeah, please give us the specs or to Mr. Bucko of the elevator so the chief of first aid can view and make sure we can get in there.
Get that to Bob this week, or within a week.
So again, another. So, again, another question with the site, if we pull up with an ambulance to town center, where are we going to get into that building? Is it from the side, from the front? How do we get in there?
We left it, it was originally testified, there was, in the original testimony of the architect, there was a, an ambulance access to the, call it to the east, or the southeast of building, of the town center building.
So, we go into the breezeway, is that where we're going? Because I see a little arrow and it kind of stops there. Is that where it goes into the breezeway?
Yeah, well, yes, I believe so. It's the purple, it's the purple access that's shown on that plan.
Okay, because over here, it looks like it's a breezeway, I'm not sure, I mean, maybe this is an architect question.
Well, I have to clarify, I have to clarify whether the breezeway is one-story or two-stories.
Okay, I guess that's an architect question.
Yes, but to go back, Hal, you were here when Dave Hoagland testified, correct?
Yes.
Remember him talking about the, the sole general exit and entrance through the main building?
Right.
Remember the question about whether or not the access there was at level, rather than having steps?
It was at ground level.
It was at ground level, right.
So I think the, the breezeway is on the second floor.
So, anybody in the fire squad, could they, first aid squad, EMT squad, would they be able to get in to the main complex through that corridor too?
Yes, but I believe, I would leave that to the architect, to how they would interact between the houses on either side.
Okay.
But we'll set, I mean.
We'll provide all the details in a description.
And I believe that, that, that doesn't affect me in drafting the site plan, but, but I know it, it concerns you and.
I have more site plan questions.
Oh, okay.
So, pavilion that's in the middle of the property, how, how would we respond to somebody that's injured in that section?
Well, you would have to, you'd have to give, put them on a gurney, I would assume, and wheel them out to the, wheel them out to the ambulance. I didn't think, my recollection of Dave Hoagland's testimony was that the ambulance was not going inside, was not going inside.
Just asking, I'm not saying one thing or another.
Well, but if you wanted to, if, we talked about.
Let me, let me go back. So, describe the surface of those, those walkways.
These are concrete walkways. So if, if you want to designate an ambulance. Plan, we can provide that. We would just make the, we'd make the walkway 10 or 12 feet, so the ambulance could drive on the, on any of these.
And how would we get in there? No, well, look, Hal, the general plan is not to have ambulances go into the interior.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Okay, so basically, what you're saying is, we would park the ambulance outside of the town center, go through that ambulance gate, roll the stretcher, and we don't use the terminology, gurney, use the, roll the stretcher down the sidewalk until we get to the pavilion.
Yes.
But also, isn't it, couldn't you go on any of those side roads to any of those access points that are described?
Which access points? You mean the ambulance gate or the fire department emergency gate?
If I can call your attention to the purple, those are for the interiors there, but to go into the pavilion area, which is yellow, fire department emergency gates, if the EMT wanted access that way, could we provide it? I know it's not set up that way, but if the EMTs wanted multiple access points, and it was deemed to be necessary, could that be done?
Yes, I just, it's about 200 feet from the outside of the, what we call the ambulance gate to the pavilion, if you're traveling on the sidewalk.
I would assume most likely that it would be good weather if there are patients walking around out there, so I'm not that concerned with the weather, like it's raining or snowing and we can't get to the pavilion. So I'm assuming that it'll be, there'll be a nice summer day and they're all walking around, and if he gets hurt, and it falls down, which happens all the time. So, okay.
But as I said, this is a, this is a presentation tonight to get your feedback and to give me some guidance on how to design the drainage.
Well, the drainage, no, that's another matter.
Let me make, just suggest the comment here. There, there's a myriad of details here, and Bob relishes those. So, I think we've clearly set, what I'll say, some guidance here. We want to make sure everybody is safe, that fire, first aid, everybody can get access when they need it, but that to the extent they require solid surfaces, they have it, but to the extent some of that can be pervious, please do so. And the final calculation, I for sure would rely on Bob. We're not going to spend our time here going over the last decimal point on those numbers.
I just have one last comment about this.
Are you sure it's the last one?
Yeah, it'll be the last one for this segment, for sure.
For this minute.
It's very important that you have signage on the buildings and on the access gateway, so that if we're going in there and dispatchers tells us, "Go to building five or house five", we know where it is.
Yes, we.
It's on the list.
Yes, okay.
That's what we agreed to, at least implicitly, yes.
Thank you. Now, let me just.
Sure. In the, in the last session, Dimitri had pointed out that in snow, it would be difficult to walk on the internal pathways. That was the reason we all had the traditional gates and the ring marked out. But in the picture, it still shows that he's reaching out to house number one and two from the outside, if that pink arrow is what that basically is. So, shouldn't that be showing through inside the building, like you're showing in all other buildings?
Going through the first pavilion, yeah, that's what he's saying.
You're talking about the one on top versus around it?
Yeah, around the town, around the town center, going from the.
Purple.
So, should it be from inside the main town center?
Why doesn't it go straight through?
No, those are for, to the, I call them the breezeways, even, even though they're, they're enclosed, because it's for safety of the residents. But, so they, the ambulance would back up to that connector, and then through a special door, be able to go left or right into all three of those units. And that's the intent of the design.
So the pink line that's going around the town center is covered? Is it covered, or is it exposed? That's, that was what he asked.
That's, that's an outside walkway.
The outside walkway, so shouldn't we be able to go from the main building until the house number one and two through the, through that connector?
Sure, that could, turn the mic. Sorry. I think it's probably easier to go outside, because it's, you don't have to wait for the elevator.
I didn't hear the comment.
What?
Sorry, I didn't hear it.
He was asking if, if I can repeat the question, so I understand it. We show on the, the original ambulance access, we show, the architect shows an arrow going around the outside of the building.
Rather than through it.
Rather than through it.
Yeah, purple.
Right.
Right.
And he was asking if it's better to go through the building.
Right.
Yes, that's my question. And I think that was what Dimitri's objection was.
Is that for me the question? You're asking them.
No, I'm asking them, based on your, your statement in the last.
The quicker we can get undercover and get to the patient, that's the goal.
Well, all right, Hal, let me just hone in on this. The, the revised access plan was developed in conjunction with senior management, is that correct?
Yes.
And the, the concept was to, what was, is it true that the concept was to balance safety of people in the village with direct access?
Yes.
And was the concept that in order to accommodate all concerns, that these new access points, they're purple, would be best served by going through the corridor, so that you'd have access to multiple buildings just by access, access points?
Yes.
In terms of the operations of it, if there are more questions about that, as to why Cindy Jakes was part of that, she can go into it more, if you want.
That's a perfect, what you've done there is perfect, because the patient is really not going to be on the outside for more than a few feet. So that, that works perfectly.
Okay, good.
Now, if I could go.
I have a small question. Those two buildings that are two floors, they're about the same size as the other buildings, so why are they two floors? Why are those two buildings two floors? If they can, if the other buildings that seem on scale to be the same can also have seven rooms, how come this is two floors?
I don't know.
I can answer that in part, and if need be, we can have it amplified. So, you heard Bob Peterson testify last time about the need for a minimum of 105 based on economic necessity. You've also heard several witnesses, including Larry Carlson and Dave Hoagland, and also Cindy Jakes, talk about this being a unique concept to the United States, which is no longer a corridor for dementia patients, it is a true village. And in order to use 18 and .55 acres of land, in order to accommodate the minimum necessary, in order to allow for seven members in a house, in order to, to have single-family homes near the northern border, to have the least impact possible to neighbors, in order to use a two-story access building, in conjunction with the need to get the 15 seven-member homes, it was designed that way. And the two-story units are, as you see, they're contiguous, adjacent to the parking lot, they're furthest away from the northern tier where, where any residents are, and they're, they're the closest to the parkway there.
So they have 14 rooms then, the two-story ones?
Okay, I can get that, thanks.
Yeah.
They're two houses, in, in each, instead of one.
It's two house numbers.
Yes.
Now that I see it.
Are you going to testify about lighting also?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll wait.
Oh, boy. Pardon my warped sense of humor.
It's okay.
I've been doing this too long.
Any other questions on the immediate access plan?
Well, I have some additional.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Because next is the fire report. The, the first comment was, the Grass Creek access road is not wide enough. According to the plans, it spans from 12 to 14. Our tower ladder without riggers is approximately 20 feet.
And we talked about that, and in fact, this plan is 20 feet now, right?
Yes.
The original plan was, of course, as indicated in Mr. Bucko's report of Monday, talked about the original Grass Creek plan, the response to that comment was, now we've left it up to the board to determine what kind of surface, what kind of hard surface in the areas of concern for access for the fire department and also for the EMT and ambulance squads is deemed proper. Is that fair to say?
Yes, but, but in all the comments, they refer to the Grass Creek, so I, if they, there's no comment that says in this review that it should be paved, so.
But we're beyond that, right? And so we're offering to the board an option?
And then, it says, we feel that the Grass Creek road should go all the way around the property to allow easier access to the buildings in the rear.
Yeah, I mean.
Done that.
And that's what we showed.
Yeah, I mean, what you're referring to, the bulk of the, of this emergency access road.
Yes.
Can be Grass Creek.
Well, it can be Grass Creek.
Yes.
Or, but the immediate access to the gates where a gurney might be used, that needs to be paved.
Right. And, and, you know, while we were having this discussion, I had a few ideas that I'd like to run past Dimitri, and then I can talk to Hal on your concerns.
Yeah, just to go back to history, the original reason to not complete what is depicted now as the loop on the fire road was for what reasons, in terms of consideration of the northern room?
We have three detention basins on the site that are connected. One is between house eight and house 11. There's a large one along the edge of the property, and then there was a, there was a third one right here, where I show the emergency vehicle road. So, that's what preempted us to not make the loop full, complete.
And if the board decides that it wants that full loop in the final decision, are you able to redesign the detention, retention basins to fully comply with the ordinance standards?
I'll figure a way.
And also, did you also not, in conjunction with the architect, design the fire road without a loop to keep a road away from the contiguous residents?
Yeah, my understanding of firefighting, which is limited, where you have to be a certain distance away from the building, so that if it falls, it doesn't fall on the fire truck. And that's what we tried to do. It's a balance, because the further away we get from the building, the further the firemen have to go to get to the building. But I think I've struck a balance to show the loop road.
One thing you didn't mention, as to why it originally wasn't the full loop, that I have hypo-suspected was part of the reason, was the steep slopes.
The steep slopes are in this area here in the northeast.
So that the road, the ring road, if it goes all the way around, isn't burdened by that problem?
No.
But the.
And we'll plot the profile of it.
So to the extent that there might be traffic on that loop, that does get it closer to the immediate neighbors, right?
Yeah, well, the intent here is emergency access, it's not for routine use.
Oh, absolutely. And again, whatever signage is deemed proper, to make sure that it's only for that express purpose, we're, we're happy to.
So, if we meet Saturday, you're also going to be able to show us where the detention system is, regardless of the issues you're facing with this roadway?
Yeah, the surveyor, the surveyor hasn't, I don't have the revised detention, obviously.
Right.
So the surveyor is going to show the, what we had proposed in this area here.
Also to assist, if you'd like to, here tonight, we can tell you, based on the original, original setting of the staking, and in conjunction with what the final, we'll look at, which you'll get a final copy of before you're out there.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I had had a few, you know, additional spots that I sent over to Hal.
Okay, well, let's, let's finish this discussion, then we can talk about what needs to be done for the outside. And then one more, one more aspect as well. One more aspect to this sketch. We show a buffer, enhanced buffer, along the.
Is that different from the buffer that was shown at the last year?
Yes, the dark green is the existing tree line, and then we show a.
And is that a fact, a concept plan that's been worked on to try to respond to comments by board members and members of the public, which will be fine-tuned for Jeff Roach to testify to about a proposed final at the December.
Yes, and as you can see, we plotted this plan on the aerial, so it shows the three houses that are most impacted by the, and so that's why we called for this buffer, increased buffer, that the landscape architect will develop.
And in, in consideration of the comments, which will be discussed in greater detail, in response to one of the questions about a green coverage, you will, is the plan now tentatively to put in double rows of completely evergreen, which could include anything from green giant Darbivady to white pine to blue spruce, in order to basically have, in short term, a, a, a green blanket?
I would leave that to the landscape architect.
I can, I can represent that, that's my understanding of what's being worked on. It's a work in progress, and we plan to bring that back to you. We didn't want to bring it back to you half-baked, so to speak, but hopefully, at the December 1st meeting, we can give you something that will.
As long as you're on to that topic, there are a couple of comments.
As long as you're on to that topic, there are a couple of comments I'd like to make your arch, landscape architects in here tonight, but I'll leave you to take the comments back.
Yes.
Yeah. First of all, one of the things he was concerned about was the waiver from Section 11610-K7.
Yes.
In going back and looking at it, I said, aha. That ordinance was one I, was one of the lead authors of, so I'm very familiar with it. It was done about 15 years ago. It's a joint project between the planning board, which I was on at the time, the shade tree committee, and a professional planner. The title of it is Tree and Woodland Removal.
Yes.
The concern that was led to it was clearcutting.
Yes.
We're trying to inhibit clearcutting. When we started that project, and we did eventually get a grant, I think, from AnJack to help write that, we looked to other towns to see what kinds of ordinances they had. And we quickly found out that there were other towns did, within the past few years at that time, had in fact adopted some ordinances, but they were also being sued by the New Jersey Builders Association.
Jesus.
So it was all over the courts.
Yes.
That litigation did get settled, and the court had appointed a special master to help find, get the settlement, to find the nuances that would satisfy everyone. That master was a professional planner, Betsy McKenzie. So when we did our ordinance, we hired Betsy.
Okay.
So we could learn from the past experiences to what to do. The key of that was not that we wanted a million trees planted on a prairie. You don't want to do that. But to limit the removal of trees from good woodlands.
Okay.
So that here, where you're having both woodlands and what I'll call open farm prairie land that you want to preserve in that way, to my mind, it is absolutely appropriate to grant a waiver from filling the whole property up with trees. So I mean, that's a history of that regard. In terms of the buffering, a varied kind of thing with clumping things and not just a rigid row, the kind of thing that he talked about, I'm very happy with. Another thing that came out in looking at that area, as was mentioned, in the far-left corner, there are some steep slopes.
Yes.
Here and here.
Right.
Yeah.
In another section nearby, it's one, I don't know, it's 112 or 113, there's an ordinance about steep slopes.
Yes.
It says, "All steep slopes shall be in conservation easements." Which takes, brings us to Order 30-58, which is about easements.
Yes.
It has a variety of language. I've had my hand in that one as well. In any case, there are two basic types of easements that mostly apply, conservation easements and landscape easements. The conservation, the ordinance about steep slopes says conservation easements. The conservation easements were mostly intended for things like wetlands, stream corridors, buffers, where you literally want no disturbance whatsoever. And the holder of the easement says, "You can't do anything." Here, this is a different kind of property. You want the prairie openness to be able to, as was stated, maybe mow it once or twice a year. So what I suggest is we really, really want landscape easements. And what should potentially be done is that buffer strip, potentially an even width along that northern property line, to be a landscape easement. And here I'll sug, and easements have to be documented, they need to be recorded.
Yes.
And you need meets and bounds for them.
Yes.
So you don't want them zigzagging all over the place. So what I suggest is that you folks take a look at this, create one main buffer area for the, the visual buffer.
That's a good question.
The steep slopes in that corner, maybe there's a little of the steep slope in the prairie, you'd handle that separately, but so you can have it draw a straight line that can be monumented, easily documented, and that would be then a landscape easement. That, in the end, you need to write that legal document. What I suggest, you pass it by Bob and Marty, make sure it meets the intent of what we're saying here. We want the area protected, but you need to be able to maintain it. If a tree falls down, you want to be able to clean it up. You want to be able to add to the main, the vegetation when it's appropriate to do so, once or twice a year to maintain, mow it and the like. And then in the end, it'll also have to get reviewed by the attached attorney. So that make, make a condition that all of this gets worked out. We don't have to do it here.
I appreciate that, and I have been a, a planning and board of adjustment attorney for over 40 years, and Marty knows that, and I've been the one who, who has looked at all kinds of easements, and so I am familiar, I know the forms. I'm happy to work with Marty if that's what the board would like, we'll satisfy...
Take a look at what the section 30-58, which says some of the restrictions, but...
Sure.
Look at what's relevant for this property here and now.
Sure, I'll be, I can work with Marty in terms of something in the short term, long term, whatever's in the desire of the board, about the forms. I haven't, my comments haven't changed from last meeting. I'm concerned with the neighbors, and I'm concerned with them having privacy all year round. And I know this is only work in progress, so I'm not going to spend time commenting on it, because it needs to be further, there's another home in the corner there that doesn't have any buffering from the site. Yep, that one.
That's much lower. Three hundred feet away.
I still should have, you know, when it's winter time, you're going to see right through that, and you're going to see the whole building complex.
You mean Wendell Smith?
So I think, I don't know whether the board's going to have to vote on this, as far as what you're saying, or we're going to straw poll it.
I'm going to sug...
I just don't want them to spend money doing things, and then we change it all around.
Let me, a suggestion related to that, that I hadn't written down, but my, with regard to the site visit. I think there's enough vegetation there that in large measure, people aren't going to see this. However, to make it easier to see if that's really true or not, find the corners of, say, the two buildings that are closest to that area, whichever, one or two. Get a balloon, put it on a string, the length of which equals the height of the building, and put it at that corner for Saturday, whenever we do this. So then people can see that. You don't have to build the buildings, but just have something visual at the relevant height that people can see. Can they see this from wherever? It's a very, balloons are cheap.
We'll get a birthday balloon.
It, it's something simple that, so that people think, go to the site and visualize, are they going to see this or not?
Well, we have envisioned and concentrated on the fact that there are approximately four contiguous neighbors there who, to our knowledge, are the ones who would see this. We've tried to envision exactly what they see now, and what they would see, and the concept is that we want to come back to you to envision what we believe those neighbors, or who are the only ones who would be impacted from that northern tier, so that there would be a...
The buildings are visible now, because I've seen them.
Yes, exactly. So, you know, if you look at it now, if you're at, let's look at the, the house on the right-hand side there.
So you can see the...
So if you're in that house, I was, I was there the other day, just driving around. So the vision from that house is you see the blinking light, and you see the barn.
Yes.
The barn is not in very good condition. That's what you see. The, also, there are three acres of commercial property, as most of you know. There has been, until recently, a retail commercial center there, in conjunction with, there's a house there, but that's half down, and that's combined again with the barn, and there is a, a landscape center there. So that's what people, I would, I think that's what Mr. Buffaloino was talking about. That's what you see.
It's visible.
So our idea is to make the situation better, so that it would be more comfortable.
Exactly.
We'd like to help the neighbors out, help, help the, the members of our community so that they're comfortable. That's, that's what we'd like to do for, for everybody.
On the landscape easements, are they allowed to erect fences, or is it strictly for greenery?
Yes. Fences are allowed. Conservation, they're not.
Okay.
Conservation end up going to the DEP, et cetera, et cetera.
That's all, another issue that we, we expect to satisfy, to especially the, the people who'd be impacted along that northern tier there. There's an existing fence now there. It's a wire fence that keeps up the cows and the sheep from going over there. You know, we want to make sure those folks who are directly impacted or most impacted are comfortable, and that's our goal.
Good.
Good.
Fine. One more quick comment. All the radii of this road will accommodate a fire truck. I have, because I was, and originally I was given the fire truck templates, so I put, when I laid out this road, I did that. It's got the three fire hydrants that were requested, the black dots, and...
Bob, you had originally recommended an access point at Dwight. Is that still something that you'd like to see, or you think this solves the problem?
I've always been an advocate of two, two access points in and out of a development, if it can be accommodated. And, and, and again, that would be for safety reasons.
I think it should be.
I would still like for them to look at that.
But for emergency access only?
For emergency access only.
Yeah.
We're happy to talk to Bob about that.
Because if, you know, God forbid, that the main entrance, for whatever reason, is cut off.
Is blocked.
There's no way to get to that site.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I believe that with a little more dialogue between Hal and Bob, we'll be able to have a compromise, something that's acceptable, so that we can...
Do you have any further testimony for this point, Hal?
I don't think so.
Hold on. Let me, in that case, since we've been going for a little while, take a five-minute break.
Would you like me to then have Hal talk more about the staking plan, or are you satisfied?
No, we, we can talk about that, yes.
Would you like to plan another at a time?
Light.
We can talk about that, whenever you'd like.
Why don't, why don't we go, go to, talk about Saturday first?
Okay.
Yeah, just give us the agenda.
I guess so. When are you leaving for your trip?
I'm going to be thirsty Friday, Saturday.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah.
That's nice.
What's the temperature down there?
High seventies here, wait.
As, as we're going down, they're going, all right, good.
Yeah, and my daughter's going to run 5K, 10K, and a half marathon.
She, she... She doesn't want to ride?
Yeah. She did the Disney marathon.
As we're going down, they're going, all right, good.
And my daughter's gonna run 5K, 10K, and a half marathon.
She does a lot of runs.
Yeah. She did the Disney marathon.
First, well, I, yeah. Let's talk about Saturday. We have tentatively talked about doing an onsite on Saturday, and we need to make sure everything's all set for that, in which case then we can give the direction to Loretta to formally notice Saturday as a group official event for the zoning board. Talking, say, 10:00 AM, meet at the property.
Sure.
Going in off where the light is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not comfortable with that, and I'll tell you the reason. I don't, Hal and I were supposed to get together. He sent me a preliminary stakeout plan. I sent him back comments, and I haven't heard back that those additional...
We can address that right now.
...locations were there.
You want it?
And I haven't seen the plan to...
Well, let's talk about it right now.
Sure. All right. So Hal, let's talk about the stakeout plan. So to talk about a little bit of history, we did have our surveyor go out, and based on at least what was our, Hal's understanding of what was to be done, there were stakes put out there. There was a stakeout plan, which was developed. It is dated October 1, 2021, and it is done by Stewart Surveying, which was literally the firm that was out there staking it. Now, since that time, Bob's correct, that he sent over more details to Hal. What Hal has, and we attempted to get the surveying crew out there before tonight. Because of scheduling, the survey crew could not be there until tomorrow. However, they will, they promised that they will finish every stake that has been deemed requested or needed. And if you want any more tonight, they'll be out there tomorrow, so they can stake whatever you want. I do have a plan here that I would offer for identification with the consent of the chair, and I have copies for all new ones here. And I'd like to have Hal talk about it, if you will.
Sure. Go ahead.
All right, Hal, could you come up here again?
Now, I think, let me just suggest something. The point of this is to see how this proposed development would look, might appear on this site. We're not going to, with a site visit, resolve every specific final detail. Is the sidewalk three feet wide or three feet three? Or whatever. That's not the point. It's just, how does this proposed development fit on this site? What do neighbors see? Might neighbors see? And how is it going to relate to the surrounding properties?
Yes, exactly. So Hal?
So let's mark, you want to mark this?
Yes, please.
A8, are we up to eight?
Loretta has a copy, so she can let us know what she wants to do.
So Hal, do you want to briefly describe what is being marked out here and how it's being labeled?
Yes. I'll talk first about the stakes that are out, that have been done.
Okay. Well, let's just get right to the chairman's question. The document that's been marked A8, is this not a combination of the October 1, 2021 stake plan, which you started to talk about, in combination with your work to plot out your expected additional stakes to fully comply with every stake that has been asked for?
Yes. Well, first of all, when Bob sent me the email with his request for stakeout, the surveyor has that. He's calculated all the points. He's going to go set them tomorrow. So basically, it's four corners of all the buildings, not just the ones on the north edge of the property. It's the stakeout of the Ring Road absent this.
What's this for the record?
I'm sorry. The latest. But I sent this to the surveyor also, and I think he's going to also, I'll check, make sure he plots that Ring Road as well, the new Ring Road. And then, and the basins, he's plotting the basins, and he's plotting the parking lot.
Okay. Now, are the stakes, are the stakes are numbered?
Yes.
And the numbers will match here? Is there any color coding?
Yes.
Was there a challenge with the stakes out there already? Somebody ate the flags, right? Not to...
The goats?
Yeah. Well, it could be. So every stake is going to be painted a different color now, so that the goats can't eat the flags, right?
And then we'll get, on Saturday, we'll get an 11 by 17 version with color coded to match, and so we can just walk. How, when you say stakes, how tall are these stakes?
They're surveyor's stakes.
Tell me a height off the ground, because I want to walk across the street and see, and look at the property. Will I see them?
Well, they're, what, foot and a half, two feet high?
Two feet high?
It's a survey laugh. Yeah, they're about two feet. You bang them into the ground, they're about two feet high.
Bob, is this going to satisfy what you were just concerned about?
Yeah, I mean, what he has here is what we talked about. But, I mean, it's up to the board. I would suggest that, you know, if it is staked out, that I'd go with Hal and take a look at it. I just don't want the board to go out there and say, well, you know, I want to see this, I want to see that.
So what I would suggest, then, is that...
A week. If we could give it a week, and go on a 13th, if it's a Saturday, as opposed to tomorrow, or this Saturday, which is a 6th. It would give Hal at least a little extra time to make sure that things are all correct.
But the other, if I may, the other problem is, there are animals out in the field. We want to make sure that, we plan to stake out the points, so they're not disturbed by the animals. The longer they stay out there, the more susceptible they are to be eaten or whatever.
Look, the bottom line here is that we were hoping that you'd come out there Saturday. If the wisdom is that that doesn't work...
Well, if the surveyor's going, going to be there tomorrow, it's better odds for Saturday than waiting another week.
The surveyor will complete it tomorrow, and if Bob has the time, we'll make sure Hal can be out there tomorrow to look at it, or Friday, or anytime.
Yeah, but what about notice? You have to give notice tonight.
Notice tonight.
So you're going to give notice whether we go or we don't go?
No, we're making the decision now.
Oh, okay.
So... Yeah. Okay, the board members, have you looked at this? Is this the kind of thing you want to see on the site? Is something missing?
I personally, I don't know. You mentioned color. So is there going to be a color for the roadway, a color for the building, and a color for the buffer?
Yes.
Is that how you're going to set it up?
Well, we have, it's not, the buffer is what we call the 100-foot buffer.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Which is shown on this, on the...
You have, I mean, the real answer is that if you want color, we will make color.
Yeah. So in other words, when I get my large plan and I look and I see red stakes, I know that's the 100-foot buffer, and I can see the stakes.
Hal's in charge of this. He knows his surveyor's going to be out there. He will tell the surveyor what is needed, and Hal, if it's not done to your satisfaction, you talk to Hal, or I'll talk to Hal. But we will have it done. Right, Hal?
Yes.
Well, Bob's going to go out there too.
We want to be able to identify things, is what he's saying. So, yeah.
Yeah.
I can't, tomorrow I can't.
What about Friday?
Friday, I have to look.
You'll be there Saturday?
Yeah, he's talking about looking, going in advance.
Yeah.
He wants to see in advance, yeah.
Yeah, he doesn't want the visit to be useless.
Yeah.
Jerry, you okay with this?
Yeah, I just want to make sure everything's done right. If Bob needs more time, I'm okay with that.
Me too.
Yeah, but I think this...
I want to make two trips.
Right now, Friday, I have a 9 o'clock and a 2 o'clock.
Well, they're concerned about, if you wait another week, the animals will eat it.
I don't know, but they're not going to eat wooden stakes.
Goats will. They'll eat anything.
I never saw a goat eat a wooden stake.
I've seen them eat books.
I had a deer eat Irish Spring Stope, and the wooden stick that it was on.
We do have, we do have our farmer here, the former owner, he could expand on the eating habits of animals, but... Good idea. Okay.
I'll be away on the 13th, just so you know.
Pardon?
I'll be away on the weekend of 13th, for whatever difference it makes.
Yeah.
I'm away this Saturday.
You're away this Saturday. Well, we got one, one not on the 6th, and one's not on the 13th. I lean to, let's just go ahead and move, and do it. I think, I don't think every last wrinkle, the last stake, is going to make us decision or not decision on this thing. What we're after is the concepts, the high level, what's where.
What we were thinking also, and I think this was raised at an earlier meeting, is to see a 3D of this. Is that something the architect can produce for us?
Another time.
It was discussed, whatever you want, we will provide. We did talk in concept about a 3D. It's a rather sophisticated process. It's very expensive and very time-consuming.
Yeah.
If it's necessary, we can do whatever you want. But our Pittsburgh-based architects, I think scowled over the Zoom call about what it would take to do that.
Yeah.
But whatever it takes, I suppose.
I think there is a little bit of hesitancy if everything's ready, but nothing has, we don't have to have perfection for this to move forward. And so let's, Saturday, 10:00 AM, at the Potter Farm, and this is going to be an official meeting of this board. However, we will do not take testimony at that meeting. We will simply observe. Hal, you will be there?
Yes.
Yes, I'll be there.
No, we don't, we don't go.
And Justin?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I normally do not attend site visits, so...
Oh, it's up to you, Marty. Whatever you would like, if you want me to be there, fine. If you don't think it's, I'm happy not to go, I'm happy to go, whatever you say.
Yeah. It's up to the board, but typically, they don't have me there, so.
Sure. And Bob, you will be? Kate? Just, I don't think...
It's just for observance.
Yes, okay.
For making sure things are done the right way. I'll be talking with Bonnie and Loretta, and we will start, open it, and we'll follow the engineer around to see what's the critical sites, and that's it.
Now, as you heard, for the record, it was Bill Potter who made the comment in the background. He is the seller of the property, and he is in charge of all the animals out there. He and his daughter, who's back there. Oh, yeah. They're in charge. So, I mean, if you have any questions about whether or not bulls are going to go after you, or sheep...
There were a lot of animals out earlier.
A lot of animals, but, so he's here, he wasn't, he's not anticipating test why, but if you would have a comfort level, he'll tell you whatever you'd like.
Okay.
Don't wear sandals.
No, it's a farm field.
Yep.
And animals do things.
I'm just...
Okay, Bonnie, Loretta, do you have what you need?
This will be considered a special meeting, so we're going to go to this side.
Yes.
And I'll try to, try to get the surveyor to come also, on Saturday.
Fine, that would be helpful. Very good. Any questions about the plans for Saturday? No, okay. As always, the clock marches.
Yes.
Let me take this pause, I know you want to have Mr. Hal continue his testimony on the site plans.
Sure, yes.
Do we want to take public questions on what's happened so far, since it's been a little bit complex?
That's fine.
Okay, why don't we do that, just keep it brief and keep everybody up to speed, and then we'll continue for a little while, not going infinitely late tonight. Do any members of the public have questions for Hal about the testimony he's given tonight, about the site, beginnings of the site plan, this is only part of the site plan? To make sure they understand what is being described here.
Good evening, Ron Gazeroski, I didn't know you were going to use my phone.
Come up to the mic, please, Ron.
I'm sorry. My name is Ron Gazeroski.
Yeah, if you just told the team now.
My name is Ron Gazeroski, I appeared at the last meeting, I do represent homeowners in the adjacent project. I have listened to the testimony of Mr. Simba, but I would request that I save all of my questions for the conclusion of his testimony, because as I listened, there are going to be a number of items on this site plan which are going to change, so I think many of the questions I might have will be resolved by the next time that Mr...
Fine, there will be other opportunities for questions.
Yeah.
You'll uphold it, that's fine.
And I think, quite frankly, I know this board are all volunteers, and I don't want to waste time for you by having me ask questions that will arise.
Very good, we'll have additional opportunity then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to receive.
This is one of the first has a question. Please identify yourself for the record.
Oh, yeah, Nicholas Ponteplum, in the adjacent property, on, you can see it on that map, 6 Country View. How much smaller it looks like on that map, due to the new changes in the access road? It looks like it's going over the 100-foot buffer line, how much smaller, would it be making the buffer line any smaller? And if so, how much? You know?
Well, it's at its high point here. It's about 15 feet, that's just surface, the buildings.
Okay. I guess this is to the board, what would the general impact of the proposed landscaping easement mean, specifically on the northern end, where me and my adjacent neighbors would, you know, live? Would that have any guarantees, or, you know, affect the ability of, you know, make it permanent, that that would never get opened, especially with the newly put on record discussion of a second entrance? So what would the landscaping easement that you're proposing, does that change, is that permanent, does it mean that it could never be removed, there could never be an opening through there?
It has to be documented, right?
Well, yeah, I, I remember that Nick, we called you Nick last night, thanks for giving me your telephone number, Nick, so I know Nick was particularly concerned about whether or not United Methodist Communities was going to go through the end of your road, right? And as indicated, we have no intention to do that. We will stipulate to that, we suggest that the resolution, assuming if we do get the approval, that there be something in the resolution that says that United Methodist Communities will not open up that road. Now, who knows what happens in the thousand years, but, you know, as it's proposed, we have no intention to break into that.
Okay, so I guess...
They would probably, this board would probably ask for a deed restriction for that issue, I'm guessing, if it comes to that.
And easement is dedicated to the township, so the township would have to grant permission for a change in use in an easement, so if it was a landscape easement, then only the town could change that use, the township committee would have to change that.
So if the township deemed they needed to use that as an access point, because this, like I said, there was a second access point that was brought up, mentioned Dwight Van Schoick, would that, would the town be able to vote to remove their own easement at that point?
The town can change the easement.
Okay. But they can't change the deed restriction, so the deed restriction will override, that will prevent the access issue from running along.
The deed restriction would restrict the owners from doing something, or, and having their deed... Okay, but the town could still override that, no?
No, the town can change the use of the easement, is what Valerie's saying, but it still can't override the deed restriction.
And possibly, to give you a more comfort level, you heard some dialogue about the entranceway, United Methodist Communities would have no intention of having an alternate route through your road there.
Okay.
If it's deemed that it's necessary, we would, if it's needed for safety purposes, is deemed necessary by fire, or whatever, we would plan to do that probably nearby the present entrance exit that you see now, and it would be nearby, so that if there was a blockage, then there'd be an alternate route, but it would not be along your road there.
Okay.
Well, another option is we make it an open space easement, which would be dedicated, and the CEP would control that, not the town.
Well, I think that, you know, obviously, you know, you could see where there would be some concern, that if the town could control the easement and potentially override it, so something like that would be interesting, you know, at least for me and my immediate neighbors, speaking for myself.
Have it as an open space easement instead of a landscaping.
Another thought is making the land...
But the open space easement has maintenance issues with it.
Well, it's the problem. For it to get changed, because the CEP would control it instead of township, so you just override the easement by the township.
Okay, well, that's helpful.
It's got, it depends on how it's worded.
I'd be happy to work with Marty, can I call you Marty? With Marty? Sir?
All might get called different stuffs.
You know, with the details to make it comfortable and reasonable.
But the deed restriction, Nick, will be the answer to it.
Okay, thank you.
That ultimately is your ultimate goal.
To make them feel comfortable.
Last question, and it was brought up the, at the very beginning, so I feel it's under question, it mentioned elderly facility, is there a hard rule as to the age limit? Is this an over 55, or could there be a young dementia patient that lives there, is this over an age?
Yeah, Nick, Hal wouldn't know that, he's just PE, Cindy would know that, now the question is, you know, we're going to have Cindy talk about other things later on, so I think it would be easier for her to hold that question, unless you want to come up. And you can ask her yourself, if you want, on the side, but we'll have her come back, and she's creating a list, so, if you have, by the way, seriously, if you have anything else you want her to talk about for operations when she gets up here, ask someone to, you know, give it to me, I'll talk to Cindy about it, we'll make sure we know what the answer is before she comes back, make it easier for everybody, I think, but, any other questions?
Won't she hit some?
No.
Thank you.
That is it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Hal, do you want to, something, one other, one last one for tonight?
Michael, this is a neighboring community at 34 Galloping Hill, my question is, and you might have...
Come up to the microphone, please.
My question is, have you looked at the feasibility of a emergency road access on a Garden State? They have a number of them on a Garden State at different areas.
I can say that this project has been submitted to the authority, and I'll have, I'll have Hal talk a little bit about that.
One of the conditions of our county approval was that we had to submit to the Turnpike Authority, it's not called the Parkway Authority anymore, and we did, and we, they came back with one comment on the access road, in which I answered.
I'm more concerned about this area here. Of course, you have a hospital up here, and if you put an access point, they could leave, and then get them right to the hospital, and if they, and if they had a problem here, they'd be able to get access in here.
There's a significant grade.
Yeah.
Also, addition to that is, does the Parkway Turnpike Authority have a general philosophy that they don't allow access on a regular basis? It's difficult to find new access points.
But you would need to anyway, because you just jump right on the Parkway from there and go.
People can expect, you think it's probably...
But it would give them a secondary means of egress, and it would also, if there was an issue at that, this intersection here, they would be able to get out of the facility this way, and get in there if there's a issue.
They would never permit this.
I'm skeptical of...
They would never permit it.
The Parkway allowing it. And number two, physically, this is about 20 feet below the grade, so you have to go 20 feet down, or...
Yeah, I would be concerned about that even for our town, I don't want the town to have access to the Garden State Parkway like that.
Well, they would, it would be emergency vehicle only, they'd have a gate, just like they do at the PNC.
We have one in front of Bay Shore.
I think that's enough.
And Bay Shore's right down the road.
Yeah.
And it would get them out of that major intersection. My other question, and my last question, is have you done a study on response times, and how that might affect the community, and the response times to the community?
I have not.
So, so if we have 105 residents now, and we're talking about EMS and fire, now that's going to delay response to my home.
Excuse, wouldn't that delay if there's family homes went up there, that's the same thing?
There would be less than 105 residents, a lot less.
You're assuming that they're going to have constant, constant traffic there, I'm just, yeah, it's just something to think of.
A lot of people in a facility.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Well, I think your answer is, do we have enough emergency service personnel to service our town? The answer's probably no, they need more volunteers, sir, so you...
Thank you very much. Or we could just vote no on it, and have 105 less.
Again, that's on an assumption, that this property won't be built, which is not a reasonable assumption, and we'll get into that later on.
Sure.
But appreciate your question.
Thank you.
You want to, Hal?
Sure. So, no, well, it depends, I want to do a preliminary analysis here, so, based on history, as you may or may not recall, because I don't know how much we talked about it, but it was the Nigerian firm that Bob used to be with, prepared a 30-page report dated September 13th. Hal submitted responses to that, and Bob, by revised report dated November 1st, if I remember correctly, has taken the, I'll call it a template, of that Nigerian report, and, I would say, where appropriate, has either said that there's been compliance, or not, and so, from a threshold point of view, I'd like to ask Hal, and Hal, let's make sure that everybody can hear us, so Hal, have you looked at every comment made by Bob in his report that we're referring to?
Yes.
And if you haven't complied, according to Bob already, do you have any concern that you cannot comply with every point raised by Bob?
I believe that I can comply with virtually every comment, there are some comments that are not applicable, but I'll, I...
So do you have a confidence level that, with maybe another meeting with Bob, that almost every, if not every, comment by Bob can be satisfied?
Yes.
Okay. So, dealing with that plan, is it not true that you and I prepared, in yellow highlights, all the comments that Bob had noted would ask for testimony?
Yes.
And is that what you would plan to focus in on tonight, to the extent that the board wants to hear those comments?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And so, we can do this in several fashions, we can start from the beginning, I know that our vice chair had particular concerns with regards to lighting, so we can do whatever fashion would be most comfortable for the board, start wherever you like. And, okay, so with that, I think it might be logical to just start from the beginning and go right through this, and see how far we get there, so...
Nobody can say that.
Fair question?
It's, it's what time already.
Let's see if we can get it.
Can you, how long will it take you to cover the lighting?
We're not going to, we're not going to get through at all, just spend another 15 minutes or so, and...
What's the sense to start?
So we can get, I'm trying to drag this out, but let's move it along a little bit.
Yeah, right, we're...
We're here, and let's go.
Okay, very good. So...
It's going to be late.
So, just a matter of technicality, Bob noted that there was a receipt of a plan, and I appreciate the addition of that comment, just for technicality reasons, on page three, it indicates that I was the author of that investigation report, I wish I had the expertise to do that, my name is on there, but it's actually done by Brian Engineering, which is what Brian Batkov does, why, too, but it is true, my name is on there, but I can't take any credit for that. In terms of some of these comments here, let's go to a couple of points in here that I just want to highlight, that we'll emphasize this later on. On page four, there's a question about waste, it was testified before, we'll have Cindy come back and testify that, about that more. Three under D, anticipate the number of employees, there was some testimony on that, that's exhibit six, I think, Cindy can come back and answer any questions that you would like. In terms of some questions on five about stormwater, again, you've already heard Hal indicate, because of the replanning of this, we don't want to waste any time, he will have a full amount of testimony on that. We've already talked about emergency access under 12 on page five. Next, we go into design waivers, dealing with buildings and adjacent lots, we're talking about making some changes, it doesn't say testimony, so I'm just going to go by that and just indicate, Bob will work that out with Hal, whatever is designed. I harked on that one, because there is one under six, and it says, "It appears that Lot 41 is owned by the advocate, further testimony supporting documents shall be provided." I can address that, Hal can too. So, when this property was purchased, there was a property search done, I have that, if you wanted on the record. When this property was acquired, I can represent that it included Lot 41. Lot 41 is a very odd triangular-shaped lot. It is incorporated, and have represented municipalities for many decades, I can tell you that there's merger by administrative action, the tax assessor, there is no intent to use that separately. And Hal, what's your understanding of why that triangular, relatively small Lot 41, which is actually on Red Hill or Van Squake at that intersection, what's your understanding of why that is separate?
This.
And for the record, Hal is putting up on the board one of his drawings from his site plan, and what drawing is this, Hal?
This is drawing C4 in the site plan package.
And this is exactly what has already been submitted, the site plan hasn't been changed, right?
Yes, Lot 41 is this triangle here.
Yeah.
And from what I can determine, when they connected Van Schoick to Red Hill, there was a lot on the other side, so it looks like these two lots were one.
Oh, yeah.
And when they put the road through the middle, they left this...
So, there's no intent whatsoever to have that Lot 41 exist in the future, if the tax assessor wants to administratively wipe it out, that's certainly fine with us. If the tax assessor wants to administratively wipe it out, that's certainly fine with us. If the board wants to make it a condition, is it fair to say that there's absolutely no practical use for having a separate Lot 41?
Just be easy to do a deed of merger if you're going to have to do any other recordings. We also do it.
Sure.
It's not locked to the beat.
It's just merge it into the big lot and just get rid of it.
It has no pragmatic effect whatsoever.
It's across the street from...
No, 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 no.
No, it's on the same side.
You can't, you have to go to the site.
Part of the property.
There was a piece of it that's now across the street.
Now part of the right-of-way.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So they took that already?
Yeah.
Okay, if there are no more questions than that, I'd like to go to page eight of the report. It's B8. This deals with notation with regards to NJ GeoWeb indicated there's wetlands. Now, that's not on our property, correct?
Correct.
It's on the county property?
Yes, there's a county park on the other side of Van Squeak.
And so in the normal course, as a condition or otherwise, what's the plan of the owner in order to make sure that there's no impact? And also discuss the purpose of an application dealing with the wetlands across the street. And show where it is, please.
The wetlands are in this area here on the park. You can see it's a little bit darker. This is what shows up on the GeoWeb.
Isn't the Mahoros on the other side of Country Wood?
That's part of the package.
Yes, part of the package. Just to be clear, you've made no changes on that, right?
Correct.
Straight out of the site plan package?
Just mounted.
Okay. And just to reconfirm, are there any wetlands on our property?
No.
So on the 18.55 acres, there's no wetlands, right?
Correct.
This is just across the street on Van Squeak, right?
George, part of Tatum?
What?
It's on Tatum?
So the aerial looks like it's...
Yeah, that's Tatum.
Where it's darker here, this is probably wetlands.
So is the plan to make an application with DEP for what's colloquially called an absence-present finding?
Right.
What's the benefit of that?
The DEP has a procedure where they'll tell you if you have wetlands on the site or if you're within the buffer of another wetland.
Mr. Chairman, that was our concern, is that they don't, they're not within the buffer area. We know they're not within the wetlands, but there may be a, based on the stream designation. You know, there are certain streams, they have certain buffer requirements. We just want to make sure that that stream with that buffer requirement isn't encroaching onto the property.
And will your office coordinate with Baco's office to make sure that satisfactory?
Complete.
Yes. Well, the wetlands expert has to do that application.
Yeah, but that's done under your...
Yes, with my plan.
That's right. That's a geo-issue?
Yes.
We have a geo-report, correct?
Yes.
Very good. Next, on page nine, six, there's something about fences off-site. I would suggest that our landscape architect is planning to come back on December 1st to talk about any issues dealing with perimeter fencing, so make sure that the adjacent property owners are happy with whatever will be proposed, and so it wouldn't necessarily be Hal. Next, with regards to page 10, there's different references, testimony provided that deals with water flows, that deals therefore with stormwater. So you'll handle that when we decide exactly where the detention basin should be. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Now, you can talk about that, that I have the board once, but the suggestion would be that they might as well hear it all later on. Is that fair to say?
Well, let me just give the board some concepts that we've developed. We have a conditional county approval. And the original concept that we developed was to have the drainage flowing to the county system in Van Squeak and then heading north. The county had us change that, so about 60% of the site will flow to the south or to the east.
And that does not go into the, if I'm...
Whack-a-nack.
Whack-a-nack.
It's directed...
Is that correct?
So east towards the Parkway?
Yeah, there's...
Could you show us on the map where that's going to happen?
There's a drainage system that goes down the ramp. So it's existing, it's a county system.
Right.
Goes to something Nut Swamp.
Nut Swamp, right?
Nut Swamp.
So this goes down to Nut Swamp.
So it's much further to the east.
Well, but what I'm saying is, we're connecting to the existing county system that ultimately flows there.
Right.
And as I said, conceptually, that's been approved.
So the rain guard is going to flow into the main detention basin, which is going to flow into that.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Sure. Wait, so originally, all of it was headed toward the Wakeake?
Yeah.
That's the way it flows now, but we're diverting it to the east.
And the county approved that?
Yes. They recommended it.
They recommended it. Yeah. That was reviewed by who at the county?
Victor, what's his name?
Who at the county?
Anyway, the camera, the expert on...
The Monmouth County Engineering Department reviewed the drainage, even though it comes from the planning board.
Are they pretty tough in their experience, Bob?
They're very reasonable and they're very thorough, yes.
They know the flooding down at Palmer Avenue. They're familiar with that.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Is there a 10, 25, and 100-year review that's done for the county?
The county has just reviewed, we submitted a 10, 20, 10, I'm sorry, two 10 and 100-year storm requirements based on your ordinance. The county asked for us to add in a 25-year system. So we have four.
And that was all provided to the county?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions on that concept, which we'll amplify?
Couple of comments. Stormwater in this watershed is a touchy subject, because this is, except for what you just said, dominantly the Mahoros Wakeake watershed.
Yes.
Which, as we've mentioned before, Rutgers has done a preliminary study. We're still waiting for the final version of it. Nevertheless, it appears we've had 200-year storms this year alone. And there has been significant downstream flooding. There have been some drone aerials of houses surrounded by floodwaters further downstream. The bridge over the Mahoros at Middle Road was over the top. And this flows further north under Route 36 to Raritan Bay. There are certainly indications from some of the people who are in the northern parts of Homedale, north of Middle Road, that there are downstream blockages, which is part of what causes the water to back up. That's beyond the scope here, but there's no question that people don't want more water going into the Mahoros Wakeake. So to the extent that you send it somewhere else or make it disappear by infiltrating is preferable. And I'm not a stormwater expert. I know we did get the letter from the Environmental Commission, and that was not in what I'd call technical terms, but to the extent that one can minimize any off-flow from this property going downstream, and we can talk about that another day, that's a positive.
I'm so happy you raised that. I did mention Bill Fitzgerald before. We're very cognizant of your comments, including on September 22nd. Again, if he was here, I'd have him qualify, but I can tell you when he comes in. I've worked with Bill for decades, and I think it's safe to say, if I have to bring in someone else to confirm it, he knows more about stormwater, Monmouth County, than anybody. He's mature. He's been doing this for 45 years. I personally worked with him in the Ocean Township Planning Board. I know he's extremely thorough. He's done a lot of work in Homedale. As a matter of fact, in the past, he actually worked on some of your ordinances, a long time ago, so there's no conflict. So he has analyzed your Rutgers reports. He's done work all throughout that corridor, the creek. He knows the basin very well, and he will be here to address that also in conformance with your state stormwater regulations, your particular ordinance. He and also Hal can talk about reasonable, all reasonable efforts that have been taken to keep infiltration, including with, I'll call it, modern rainwater devices and the like. So I would hope that you would agree at the end of that, that you will feel that we've taken all reasonable steps. But again, we will be here December to talk about all of that.
Good. Yeah, I mean, that comes back also to the question of coverage. And the less coverage, the less you have to infiltrate, the more you can infiltrate, the less goes downstream.
Yes, for sure. Again, Mr. Fitzgerald has worked on projects in Homedale, specifically dealing with the coverage issues, and he certainly understands the reason for coverage issues in relationship to infiltration rates, and he will cover that for you.
Good. We're half and clarified for the residential, was it 60% that you're diverting down?
Approximately.
Approximately 60? I just wanted to make sure I had that.
It's clearly a majority of the site is being diverted to the east.
And the rest of it will be what, self-percolating at the property?
Or overflow. There's areas that are not being disturbed, so it'll just overflow the way they do now.
The surface flow.
Right.
So in terms of every square foot that's intended to be disturbed, will that be taken off of the site in these basins that you're referring to? I shouldn't say every square, to a reasonable degree, is the intention to take all that impacted groundwater off the site?
All the disturbed areas being piped to the basins is being treated, and then it's being released into the county system. But what happened, when the county reviewed it, they were concerned about the culverts also to the north, and that was one of the main reasons why they asked us to divert the drainage.
Now, that presumably leads into a Middletown system?
Nut Swamp is Middletown, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's still a county system.
Right.
Because there are county roads?
There are county roads. It's county catch basins. We're connecting to the catch basins in the roadway.
Is Van Squeak a county road, do you know?
Yes, Route 52.
Yeah.
I'll have to take a look at where that drains to, and if that drains into Middletown.
We can provide that information whenever you'd like.
Yeah. I mean, that just comes back to, Middletown and the Taylor Lane develops, it's another piece of what flows into the Mahoros. So watershed boundaries don't necessarily match municipal boundaries.
I understand.
So what if Middletown objects to that?
It's county jurisdiction.
So they can't say nothing.
County jurisdiction.
Again, based on...
Middletown was noticed, probably.
Based on, you know, we were required in normal course to apply to Monmouth County, and again, we have a conditional approval, and I think, well, Hal, the conditions that have to be met, do they relate substantively at all to what we're talking about, or have they been approved? Have all stormwater-related issues been approved, subject to details dealing with...
Correct. And I would also like to bring out that the 100-year storm regulations of your ordinance, municipal ordinance, say that there should be a 20% reduction in the 100-year. We're calling for close to a 50% reduction.
So it's double what's required, is that right?
Forty-seven percent. Because the basins don't respect the designed storms. So when you make the basin a certain size, you over, it ends up being overdesigned for the other, for the other storms.
And what did the Environmental Commission ask for?
No, no offset, nothing.
Right.
Which...
Well, you try.
We're reducing it from the 100-year storm, we're going to 47.5%.
Again, that Rutgers study, I understand those are drafts at the present time?
Well, it's been a draft for two years.
Yes, I understand. Work in progress.
Yeah, I mean, originally, we thought we were going to get a final in October, and we got an email a week ago saying, sorry.
Okay, any other questions?
Not on that.
Okay.
At this hour point, have you reached the pause point?
Sure.
Should we call it a night?
If you'd like.
I'm letting some people to say so.
Whatever your comfort level is for a happy day now.
In that case.
But we didn't get the lighting, though, you know? That's the next thing. We're ready to stop.
You need a flashlight?
All right. We'll continue this hearing on Wednesday, December 1st at 7:00 PM. There is a, in that regard, well, the next normal zoning board meeting is Wednesday, November 17th.
However, that's when Mr. Bucko is in Atlantic City.
Correct, and also some others are. Do we have any other agenda items for that evening? Well, let's do one thing at a time. Let's, we'll continue and carry this public hearing on the dementia center to Wednesday, December 1st, without any further notice to the public. There will also be an onsite, as previously discussed, this Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Potter Farm. You'll need to arrange with Loretta any extension that's needed.
Yes, I've signed the other two, and Laura is very prompt. She sent it to me the day after the last hearing. And if you send it to me tomorrow morning, I'll sign it tomorrow, so.
Okay, do we have any other business for the dementia center for this evening? No? Okay, thank you. And then we will, a motion to cancel the zoning board meeting for Wednesday, November 17th.
Thanks.
Is there a second? All in favor? All right. Motion carries.
What else?
Okay, we have...
We have minutes to approve.
One other item of business, namely the minutes of September 1st and October 6th, as presented by our esteemed secretary, Loretta. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Move.
One at a time?
Sure.
So the September 1st, Nancy and Kirkland are not eligible. So is there a motion for anybody else?
I'll motion. Okay, give Anthony.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? October 6th?
There's Val and Sorel.
Okay, motion?
Motion to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other reports or business for tonight?
I don't understand how to make a decision to have a full engineering review on a backyard variance. I sent all the applications to both Bob and Kate, and it's up to them whether they... So I'm not criticizing, I just want to understand. So Bob thought it was necessary to have a full engineering review? Because this is just a setback issue. There wasn't really anything else on this application, and I just don't understand. I don't think it's a good precedent for this board to set, to require. So I just wanted to know, if Bob thought it was necessary, then I defer to Bob, but I wanted to make sure that decision was coming from Bob and not from somewhere else. Bob's decision alone? Okay.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'd say the ones where he's been involved have been properties which are not flat and in general, and they've been potential drainage issues and impacting neighbors.
Well, but we wouldn't have had a zoning issue but for the setback, so it's really not fair to heighten the requirements for a taxpayer or a resident because it was 20 feet, because they have, either a side yard, they have two front yards, to put all those additional restrictions on them because they're unlucky enough to have two front yards. It's not fair.
And I agree with that. I mean, what we can do going forward is, you know, the red... I mean, what, what we can do going forward is, you know, Loretta will send me the, the application, and then what I'll do is I'll say it really doesn't need a formal engineering review, but however, the board should consider.
And I think you, you just act like in the.
That takes me.
And you know what? I think you did that like on the, the One Bell Works application we had, where you said, it doesn't need a full engineering review, but here were my thoughts.
Right.
And I think that's great, and if you think it needs a full engineering review.
Then I'll let you know.
I 100% defer to your judgment, but I just wanted to understand where that decision was coming from, because while I understand some, some members may feel, well, there are drainage issues, that's fine, but it isn't fair to impose additional restrictions on someone just because they're unlucky enough to have a side yard, where those same restrictions wouldn't be present for somebody who didn't have a side yard setback. I just don't want to be unfair to people.
And I agree.
Also, the cost.
Well, that's, that's a thing.
The property owner, and even if the planner speaks, you know, I don't know if today she's charging them or what, how's that work? We spoke about that today. So that's unfair to them also, for the homeowner to have to pay that cost. And the same thing is, I haven't seen our zoning officer, Loretta, come to any meeting. She usually answers a lot of these type of questions. Is there a reason she's not coming to the meetings?
She's overworked, I understand.
She works, she trains dogs in the evening.
So we're not gonna have a zoning officer come to our meetings?
If, if we need her to come, she will.
I was just about to ask that question. She's not here for these hearings.
We will know if we need her unless she's here and we have a question. We can't always ask.
He's right. The zoning officer isn't present for any of this.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about in the past, the zoning officer always, I remember Alice was always sitting up here at every meeting.
And Dave.
And Dave, too.
The administrator at the time, they go to all the meetings.
Yeah, but I'm saying, we had, that's where the zoning board, if you don't have the zoning officer at our meeting, I mean, it doesn't make sense.
For these kind of hearings, she should.
I have asked for it, and it's been denied.
Really?
Yeah.
I mean, they're the ones that, that, they're the ones that caused the zoning issue to come to us, so they should be here to say, hey, why did you do that? You know, what's the reason or whatever?
So, Ralph, so you asked the administrator to have the zoning officer attend?
I talked to Steve Winters, who's her boss.
Yeah.
And, but basically, he said, his statement was, she is open, not just Lonnie, but all of the upstairs group is understaffed for the workload that they have, and they can't take them on board. They've been doing it, they've had, brought in an outside consultant to look at the functions and the workload up there, and I have not heard about any report from that group yet.
They never replaced Dave, right?
What?
They never replaced Dave, when he moved over to the fire.
There's, there's fewer people doing it, and the workload inherently for development varies. It's a function of what projects come in, when they come in. This is a complex project that we've just been dealing with. Other projects are simpler.
Well, we had Lonnie while we were zooming.
Yeah.
So at some point, she just dropped off, and nobody really gave us any kind of explanation. So it would just be nice if we were told.
Well, she wasn't there on all the zooms.
She wasn't on all of them.
No, but she was at least on some zooms, so she was there.
And if it's a financial reason or overworked, that's, I understand that, but it's still, to me, it shouldn't be a zoning officer at this meeting, at all the time, and they have to figure that into the budget or whatever they have to do. It's not like an optional thing. She's the zoning officer. She's the one that began the process.
She should be given a raise.
Do you feel like she should be here for the backyards, or even the.
For everything.
No, no, I don't think she should be here. No, I don't think so.
She doesn't need to be here.
No, absolutely not.
So do you feel like she should be at the backyards?
No.
So what is she gonna be here for?
Well, I feel that if we had an idea that there was something that we had a concern about, she should be here. I mean, they work full-time day jobs, and I don't think that we should make them attend night meetings unnecessarily.
Shouldn't we have some sort of report or something from her, or something, telling us her feelings?
Well, that's an idea.
It's a report, it's what I asked for.
Can we vote for a raise for Lonnie? And Loretta?
It's also hours in the day.
You throw Loretta in there, you can.
I mean, Loretta, there should be something from the zoning officer.
And Bonnie was here, I put her in also.
Yeah, we have, you know, if she can't see a person, then she maybe could put her on paper.
Do I get paper?
Something. I mean, I just remember the days when Alice used to sit there for years.
Sounding to me like a dog.
Sitting over there on that corner seat.
And that's her full-time job.
I think we need a zoning officer.